Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our regular Tuesday Board Meeting. Want to welcome everybody. It is 5 o'clock, so we are going to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, 5:00 p.m. We'll call this meeting to order. Want to say welcome and say hello to all my board colleagues, to Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff that are present, and to any guests that we have, both in person and online. Welcome and thanks for joining us this afternoon. Good to have you. So, we will start our meeting, and I will read our Board norms and protocols as we do. At every Board meeting, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the Board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at Board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each Board meeting and at Board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon and welcome to everybody and to all of our guests that are here present with us, both in person and virtually, and to all of our staff and Board members. Good to see everybody. With that, I would ask Ms. Smith to please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I would actually ask that we amend today's agenda, Board, to add item. It's on your agenda now as new, Item 10A, Board Discussion Around the Facilities Committee. Would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add that item.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve tonight's amended agenda.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. So, we are going to start our agenda. First up, we have our awards and special recognitions. We're going to do our Employee of the Month and Student of the Month today. Board, you should have received an email communication from me regarding the process for tonight. So, I want to thank the Student of the Month and the Employee of the Month Committee that's made up of staff and Board members. They would, they have asked the Board if we would allow all Student of the Months and Employee of the Months to be presented, and then for the full Board to be able to take a picture with everyone. So, we won't take any pictures, but students or employees, please don't leave right away. We want to make sure you get your picture taken, if you so choose, with the full Board, after which, we will take a quick recess to allow for family members to take additional pictures, or for Board members to congratulate, or say any words to those students or employees. So, just a bit of a shift in how we're doing this recognition starting this evening. I do want to thank all of our Board members and staff members who served on that committee to make sure that we're doing this in a process that recognizes and honors both our students and staff and those that participated in that. So, thank you for that. So, with that, I would invite Ms. Samari Devon to come to the mic and to recognize our Employee of the Month.
Mr. Lopez, Dr. Stubblefield, all of our Board members, to all who support Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and guests, good evening.
Good evening.
I am Dr. Sutherland. I have the pleasure of announcing our October Employee of the Month. Our October Employee of the Month is Mr. Tatum. Mr. Tatum is a Central Office Head Custodian, and he was recommended by some Central Office employees. And these are just the short statements that some things of people said about him. He's reliable, dedicated, and he's often seen in the building doing several active tasks, it can be anywhere from moving furniture, putting up setups or breakdowns. He is one of those people, when you meet him, his touch, he has a good feeling with everyone he encounters. We truly appreciate all he does to enhance the environment and the clean atmosphere within our workspace. It is great to have Mr. Tatum here in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools District. At this time, Mr. Tatum was unable to be with us tonight, but we do have a special treat.
Two, three.
Mr. Tatum, the Human Resources Department is so honored to present this award for you for being the October Employee of the Month. We are, congratulations, and we want to say thank you for all of you too.
Well, thank you very much. I am very honored and pleased. Thank you all, K C K Public Schools.
At this time, if I could have his supervisor, Mr. Doug Clements, come up and accept his award. It says, "This certificate is awarded in recognition of outstanding performance, hard work, dedication, and upholding the standard of excellence to the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools District."
Thank you.
Can I just thank you on David's behalf. He's a very hard-working and dedicated Head Custodian, and I'm sure he takes a great deal of pride in this, although he's a very modest. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, Superintendent Dr. Anna Stubblefield, and members of the Board of Directors. I am excited to be with you this evening to present our USD 500 Students of the Month for October 2022. The students that have been nominated are representative of our scholars in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, who embody our Kansas social, emotional, and character development standards. These include practicing good citizenship as respectful, responsible, empathetic, and ethical individuals, healthy decision-making practices, demonstration of personal safety and risk prevention in school, the promotion of a positive school culture, effective problem-solving, and valuing excellence. We have asked that all of our staff that nominate students to think about the following six domains for achievement. Attendance recognition, outstanding academic performance, positive behavior, commitment to service and citizenship, scholarship and/or community recognition, and outstanding athletic achievement. Before I read the nominations for our students, I bring the following acknowledgements. We are grateful for our Kansas City, Kansas Foundation for Excellence that provides support for the recognition of our scholars through the Excellence in Education Program. I would like to recognize our Executive Director, Crystal Watson. We are also honored to be able to fund our new awards for the Student of the Month and our Excellence in Education Program initiatives through the generosity of Capital Federal Bank, and will be remiss if I did not acknowledge Vice President Michael Dewire, who is with us this evening, to celebrate with our scholars. We thank you both for your partnership in celebrating student success, and as our Board President said, as I read the nominations, we'll ask the students to come forward and receive their award and certificate, and then we will get our photos while we are on break with our entire Board of Directors. Our first Student of the Month represents our early childhood schools in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, and we are excited to acknowledge Sharif Alawad. Sharif is an early childhood scholar at Morse Early Childhood Center. He was nominated by his teacher, Rosiah Marks. She has nominated Sharif for his positive attitude and willingness to learn every day. When he comes to school, he always includes each of his classmates when learning and playing. He is a devoted big brother who ensured that his younger sisters adjusted to school as best as he could. Whether it's a wave across the luncheon, a hug in the hallway, or holding their hands while walking to the stairs, he always demonstrates compassion and protectiveness over his younger family members. Sharif shows pride in his heritage and culture. He notices when various languages are spoken around him, and sometimes he shares what he knows in Arabic. He works hard during learning and laughs hard when it's time to play. He has the budding spirit of a leader, and they are honored to have him as a scholar. We present to you Sharif Alawad. Thank you. Sharif is kind of shy. Good job. Our next Student of the Month represents our Elementary Student of the Month. We are excited to recognize Kamora Her as our Elementary Student of the Month for October. Kamora is a first-grade student at West Park Elementary School and was nominated by her teacher, Connie Oaks. She has stated that Kamora is a light in our classroom. She always has a positive attitude within her learning and towards others. She puts a tremendous effort into all of her work. She is characterized as a learner who exhibits high expectations for herself. She is the classroom cheerleader when others need positive encouragement. When she's helping other students, she plays an important role as a peer teacher. She shows the students how to complete their work by helping them dig deep and talk about their learning while encouraging them and lifting them up. Ms. Oaks admires her desire to follow through with any task while not giving up. She has such a strong willingness to learn and always shows respect, kindness, gratitude, courage, and integrity in everything she does. Kamora loves to do things in a big way. She's been called truly amazing and inspires her teachers and classmates to be their best selves. She radiates joy wherever she is, and is contagious to everybody around her. She is such an inspiration. Some fun facts about Kamora, she loves math, she likes going to school to make friends, and Kamora wants to be a firefighter. Congratulations. Our Middle School Student of the Month that we would like to recognize is Paola Figueroa Diaz. Paola was recommended by a teacher, Sally Nelson, at Eisenhower Middle School. She remarked that Paola has been such an outstanding young person to have in computer applications class. She is known as a very hard worker, always asks questions when she doesn't understand, and strives to be the best learner possible. She demonstrates kindness as a character trait by saying hello to her teachers every morning. Additionally, while in class, she demonstrates outstanding service and citizenship by taking away from her own studies to help translate to five other students that sit at her table. Ms. Nelson notes that she is willing to give up of her own class time to sure ensure that not only she is learning, but also that her peers are learning. This is proof of the selflessness demonstrated by Paola on a daily basis, and without a doubt contributes to her recognition for positive behavior. Some fun facts about Paola is she says she loves going to Eisenhower because the teachers are dynamic and nice. When she's not in school, she likes to take naps. I like to take naps, too. And she is very passionate about math. We are excited to recognize Paola Figueroa Diaz. Our final recognition of the month goes out to Michael Bueso Landevery, who is a high school sophomore at J.C. Harmon High School. Michael has been recommended by Mr. Mike Harton, who is a Health Sciences Staff Member at the school. He says Michael is known as a standout student in so many different respects. He nominated Michael under the criterion of academic achievement because he continuously works to maintain all A's for his grade marks, and he is characterized in class as a thoughtful, intelligent, and reflective learner who brings his best to everything he does. Michael, however, is outstanding in more ways than just his academic achievement. In the halls of Harmon, he is consistently positive, kind, and a polite presence with a good sense of ethics and a great sense of humor. He rarely, if ever, misses school. I believe that he's only gone one day this entire year, and he's always willing to help his fellow peers, his teachers, and the support staff around him. Mr. Harton believes that Michael should be our District High School Student of the Month because he, as a learner, represents the best of KCKPS, and as a person, he represents the best of the community. Mr. Harton also noted that I have no doubt he will go on to do great things in life, and I'm honored to see him recognized for the great things that he does now. Michael was not able to be with us tonight, but his teacher, Mr. Harton, will be receiving his award on his behalf.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you. And so, at this moment, I would actually invite the Board to come forward, and we will take some pictures with our special guests and honorees tonight. So, I know we've got our communications team ready. So, we'll take a quick, I'll say 13-minute recess so that we can do that, and then we will start our meeting again in 13 minutes. Thank you.
Get back to our agenda and return to open session. Thank you for giving us a quick break. That's one of my favorite parts of our agenda every time we get to do that. So, thank you. Congratulations to all of our students and to our employees. And thanks for letting us take a moment to congratulate each of our honorees. So, we're really excited for all of you. We'll continue with our agenda. Next up on our agenda is our consent agenda would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few quick announcements. First, this Saturday, I will be participating in what's hap- in the what's happening in the DOT event. This will take place Saturday, October 29th, from 12:00 to 2:00 o'clock PM at the First AME Church. Myself, Mayor Tyrone Gardner, and District County- County District Attorney Mark Dupree, along with Judge Tony Martinez, will be a part of the panelists on this Saturday. We will also like for everybody to mark their calendars for our first Enough is Enough Town Hall meeting. This will be hosted by Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and a Town Hall Forum on Thursday, November 17th, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at J.C. Harmon High School. The tentative schedule is as follows. 5:30 to 16- 6:15, we'll have a resource fair and refreshment. 6:15, remarks from myself, and then a panel discussion from 6:30 to 7:30. More details will come, but we just want everyone to mark their calendars for Thursday, November 17th. We want to provide a brief update on our Learn to Swim program. This is a partnership with the YMCA of Greater Kansas City, the Unified Government, Warner Media, to teach Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools students water safety out- water safety. The last 2022 group is currently in session and will be finishing up in a few short weeks. Thus far, we have impacted 1,004 swimmers to this date. We are- we will be meeting with the team of partners in the coming weeks to review the program and discuss how we move forward with this program and our partnership. We want to say congratulations to the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library for receiving the 2022 Extension Appreciation Award. This award was given to the library system by the Wyandotte County Extension Council. Leaders of the Extension Council says their staff nominated the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library because of their exemplary work during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. Also, congratulations to Wyandotte High Restorative Justice Facilitator Natalie Johnson-Berry. She is the recipient of the California Casualty Award for Teaching Excellence. The National Education Association Foundation announced that Ms. Johnson-Berry was one of 46 educators across the United States to receive this prestigious honor. She is also running for the top national award. Five of the award nominees will be nominated by the NEA. State affiliates will have a chance to be selected, and they will receive a $10,000 reward. If you are looking for an opportunity to teach in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, have you thought about becoming a teacher if you do not have a teaching license? The Kansas City, Kansas Teach Fellows programs might be a perfect fit for you. We're looking for you. Learn more about our program by registering for the upcoming info session that will happen Tuesday, November 8th, from noon to 1:00, and then also Tuesday, December 13th, from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Both sessions will be held here at Central Office. We want to say good luck to several of our sports teams who are competing tonight. Both Harmon and Sumner are hosting first-round regional soccer matches tonight. And Sumner will host a first-round football regional game on Friday. All of our teams are competing in several locations, but those schools are hosting. And I also want to say congratulations to all of our bands. I did get a chance to attend the Battle of the Bands on Saturday and was entertained and excited about what's to come for all of our band programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few from my end. Just a reminder to continually check our board calendar for upcoming meetings. A reminder that there are a couple of committee meetings happening next week on November 1st, so make sure you have those on your calendar if you would like to participate or view those. The information for those committee meetings are on our website. There is a special page on our website for those committee calendars where you can find the information to view if you would like to participate. And then a reminder to our board that we have our special meeting next, November 3rd of next week. So, reminder to make sure you have that on your calendar. That will be in-person at MVP Law Firm in the boardroom. So, make sure that that is on your calendar as well. And then I will also just would like to give a shout-out to Monique James. I was in her classroom today over at Wyandotte, and we were talking about hands-on learning and some of the work that they're trying to plan for next semester. And it was really just great to hear about some of the potential collaborations. So, thanks for letting me sit in on that conversation today, Monique. You're doing some good things over there. I want to give a shout-out to all of our students across the district that have participated in the Cambio para Cambio to raise scholarship dollars for scholarships to- for local students. Just great job. I know that campaign just ended. Congratulations to all of our students who raised funds for that- for those scholarships. And then, board, you should have received an invitation, I believe, from our JAG-Kay programs and a couple of our local high schools with an invitation to participate in their initiation and installation ceremonies. So, I know those are coming up over the next couple of weeks or few weeks. So, if you have the time and have a chance, would invite you and encourage you to attend. I've been to them before, and they're great to see our students who are going to be doing some great things and our staff who are encouraging them. And lastly, I would just remind folks to make sure you get out and vote. It's important to be a part of that democratic process and make sure you vote. So, there is a lot on your ballot. Get informed, get educated, and make sure that you vote. Vote early, vote the day of, but make sure you're out there voting. And take someone with you to go vote, too. So, that's all I have. I will open it up for our board commentary in case there are other board members. Ms. Humphries.
Yes, I'd like to thank all of the principals and the students of the schools that I've been visiting the last couple of weeks. It's- it's great to be back in the classrooms seeing their excitement. As you know, volleyball's over, but basketball's starting. Middle school basketball starts this week. If you want to go to some of those games, it's on our athletic calendar. Wrestling is going to be coming up. And then I have a question for all of you. How many of you know that Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools has the only harp ensemble in this area? We have our own students playing harps. They had a concert last Thursday at the church down on Southwest Boulevard. And our students, they're just beautiful. You thought the marching band was great on Saturday. Sit in the church and listen to those harps play. It's truly the music of angels. But we are the only one in this area that has students playing harps. So, they will be having a spring concert, and I'm sure Ms. DeSoto will let us know when the date is. But we have so many nice things going on in our schools with our kids, and it's great to be out and see them.
I'd just like to acknowledge that on this past week, or rather, on Saturday, I had the privilege of going to the Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Centennial Gala, and they acknowledged Crystal Watson for the excellent work that she has done with the Foundation for Excellence. And it was a beautiful ceremony. Our own Sister Wanda Brownlee Page is a member of this sorority, and it was excellently done and presented.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. I have four items. You mentioned the finance committee, those minutes and notes, and will, after this next meeting, a full list of descriptions of funds that the school manages. And so, that's very informative. So, it's there. Number two, I did receive your email, Mr. Lopez, but I wanted to acknowledge that and tell the public. We are still seriously planning our board listening tour. We're not going to overlook that. Time is getting away, but we're still going to address that topic. November 10th is a long day for me. From 9:00 to 4:00, K-12 will have a special meeting talking about sped funding, trying to figure out, for some of us, how we can fully fund special ed. And then that evening, there'll be a KSB board meeting, November 10th. So, I'll report back later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Additional board members, and thank you for that reminder. We do have our KESB convention coming up, November 10th, 11th, and 12th. So, board members, if you're planning to attend, make sure you have all of your information for your registration and for the workshops, and we will see you at that KESB convention.
I was just going to add, the Choir Festival is this Saturday at Wyandotte High School, starting at 3:00 PM. To anyone who wants to come to see our choirs on display.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. As always, plenty going on around our district. So, thank you. Hopefully, you all can take advantage of all the great things our students are doing in the district. All right, we will continue with our agenda. Next up is our community comment section. We do have some folks lined up for community comment this week, so welcome to all of you. Thanks for joining us today. Just briefly, again, a reminder, anyone and everyone is welcome to give community comment at board meetings, whether it's in-person, via Zoom, or in writing. Please just make sure you sign up with our board clerk, Ms. Leslie Smith, prior to the board meeting, the Monday, by noon at the- before the board meeting, and we will get you on the agenda. Just briefly, again, make sure that you have checked in with Ms. Smith and that she has your contact information so that we can have that for the role. You will have three minutes. Please state your name at the beginning of your comments. Your time will start after that, and you will have three minutes to give your comments after that. So, and then I will, if you go longer than three minutes, we'll have to politely ask, interrupt you, but we will move from there. So, our first community comment comes from, and I apologize ahead of time if I do not pronounce your name right. You can correct me when you come up to the microphone. We have Ms. Shalisha Parsons.
Going to talk fast. My name is Shalisha Parsons, and I have been a kindergarten teacher for the district for 14 years. I do not teach or promote racial theories, gender views, religious views, or political views. I personally believe these issues are for the parents of the students. I am a parent as well and the biggest advocate for my daughter's education. Please vote against cameras in the classroom. Teachers under audio and video scrutiny is not the answer. I spoke with several teachers, and we do not want to teach in a fishbowl. This tells us that we are not valued, trusted, or respected as educators. Teachers who want to submit lessons or recordings should do so voluntarily and be compensated. This is a huge invasion of privacy for the teachers and the students. This could lead to several liabilities, investigations stemming from parents and staff requesting lawyers to pull the tapes nonstop. We are tired of the constant swinging pendulum of experimental educational trends. Instead of making toxic workplace environments, let's do better and focus on how to improve teacher morale and job satisfaction. We have teachers who do not speak out from fear of retaliation. They say it won't matter. They say nothing will change. They say you are too far removed from the classroom, and we are in the trenches doing the work. Things are getting worse. When the teachers are happy, the students are happy. Let's move on from bandwagon ideology and bring common sense back to public education. Our district has a lot of passionate teachers with expertise who love teaching. We do not love the politics that come with being teachers. The lack of trust and transparency is getting out of hand. If you do not trust your teachers, then you need to fire us all. When we heard about this proposal last year, we were told the cameras would not be used as evaluation tools. Now, that turned out to be untrue. We are being micromanaged on every level, from a scripted, one-size-fits-all curriculum down to cameras being installed in our classrooms. Being under constant state of stress is unhealthy and causes illness. No professional autonomy, creativity, or freedom. The days to teaching to the standards are over. We did not sign up to be actors putting on a performance. We want to build genuine relationships with our students. The classroom should be a safe place for teacher and student conversations. Our district priorities should include hiring a full-time armed officer for each building to keep students and staff safe, staff retention, higher salaries, and recruitment to keep class sizes low, hire parers and special education teachers to give students the services they need, hire bilingual support to help with our growing ELL population. We can successfully run our schools and improve student achievement without cameras in the classroom. We cannot run our schools with a bunch of empty classrooms and cameras when students and staff leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Our next community comment will come from Ms. Carolyn Hummel.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Hummel. Good evening. I am here to address the cameras in the classroom issue. Despite what I know are the problems for teachers with the use of these, I'm here as simply to speak as a teacher who's concerned about quality instruction. The basics of the camera proposal- Oh, Lordy, okay, there we go. The basics of the camera proposal have been laid out in the board agenda, and it was interesting to see that the district has changed its focus from safety to instruction. And I'm curious where the money is going to come from now. But teachers use instructional strategies that engage learners, and that can't be done by watching a video. If a student's off track, you use a redirection. You can't do that for an online student. If a student needs clarification on an assignment, you can rephrase and break down the question. But the student at home won't have help to do that. A student is distracted, use a proximity, you know, to help re-engage the student. Students online won't have help with that. A student wants you to check their writing to make sure that you're meeting their expectations, the online student won't get that in real time. You have a squirrely student, a few of us do. Most likely, the teacher has to figure- has already figured out how to get their students up and moving using gallery walks and games and stations. Online students will only get to watch the engaged learners learn. Students do not learn by being set in front of a video and to follow along. We've tried that for a year, and look what it did to our learners. They are more disengaged than they've ever been. They don't know how to have conversations with their peers or to ask for help. Returning to virtual learning should not be an option for our students. There are better solutions out there. How will students have, quote, equitable access to highly qualified teachers? Students in classrooms can easily ask questions and get help in real time. Online students will have to have- have to email their teachers and wait for responses as there is no way to effectively teach online and in person at the same time. I'm just confused as to how someone would think that these are equitable situations. But finally, what saddens me the most is the rationale that this will help our most at-risk students to experience live lessons. I do not understand how this is a solution to teach our struggling math and reading students, a solution. Plopping a struggling math student down in front of a screen and telling them to learn from the lady on the screen in a classroom somewhere else in the district is disrespectful to that student. It is your duty to put a teacher in front of every student, not just a screen. Our most at-risk students need more teachers, not less. They need wraparound services focused on targeted goals with an educational team on the same page, not on a camera. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Our next comment will come from Ms. Barbara Williams.
Hello there. And I hope everyone-
Hello there, and I hope everyone so far is having a good evening. My name is Barbara Williams. I'm a proud employee for KCKPS. I work at Frank Rushton. Go Jaguars. It's always a good day to be a Jaguar. It is. I would like to add my two cents to the discussion about cameras. What problem do cameras solve in the classroom? Originally, I had heard that cameras were going to be for safety and security, and so I will base my comments on that. I'm going to quote from an activist in California who said, "Surveillance systems treat everyone as a constant suspect at the expense of student and staff's privacy." Constant monitoring creates this culture of fear and paranoia that truly isn't the most proactive response to safety concerns. And cameras, regardless of the reason, in the classroom are going to create that problem. And in a brand-new study out last month from Johns Hopkins, and I gave you that paper, students at high schools with prominent security measures, and that includes cameras in the classroom, have lower math scores and are less likely to attend college and are suspended more compared to students in schools with less surveillance, and that includes cameras. Black students are four times more likely than students of other races to be enrolled in high surveillance schools. And what about the queer high school student who is gender nonconforming at a school where they feel safe? Are they going to feel safe anymore when there are cameras? They may fear that someone watching will out them to their family and/or other people that they haven't come out to yet. And what about, what if someone on the outside watches these videos from these cameras, and they hear a teacher use a pronoun for a student that the outsider perceives as wrong? What then? The question for me is, how do we keep our students and staff safe when using cameras in the classroom? I would also like to add that our teachers and administrators are truly working at capacity right now. They are doing the very best they can with what they've been given, and they've been given a lot. Please do not add to their burden. They don't need anything else on their plates. And finally, I would like to give a shout out to all the teachers and all administrators at Wyandotte. Stay strong, folks, for each other and for your students, and keep up the good fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next comment will come from Terry Lester. Welcome. Good afternoon. And we'll make sure that we get those passed out to the full board this evening before we go home. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, first of all, okay, I'm Terry Lester. I'm sure that you recognize me from negotiations, but I assure you, I am here tonight as a teacher at Washington High School. Yes, I live eight blocks outside of Kansas City, Kansas, but I love KCK, and I put a lot of sales tax. I pay a lot of sales tax in this county, okay? Because, you know, Washington is right by the legends and do all my shopping on my way home. I probably do need these to read my notes. Anyway, the thing I want to say is, up until now, all of the conversation that we've had about cameras in the classroom...
And Ms. Lester, I'm sorry, I'm just going to, if you could just make sure you speak into the mic so we make sure everybody can hear you, and I'm noting the time. I'll give you your time. Don't worry.
I move around a lot when I teach, so, anyway. So I got my jokes in, so everybody's happy, right? Everything that we've said about cameras over the last many, many years has been organized around safety and security. All of our contract language around cameras is in Section C. Okay, Article Four is, you know, duties and responsibilities. Section C is safe and secure working conditions. Everything what we have in the contract is in this half-page, and it's all about how the video will only be used to, you know, backup. It's to keep us safe. It's to keep the kids from not acting up. We're only going to use it. It's all going to be restricted. Only specific people can see it. So everything is like organized around safety and security. It's the surveillance system. There was a published surveillance camera procedure last year. I confess, I couldn't find it in the library, but somebody gave it to me. But it's also, it's all about digital video surveillance is intended, okay, to enhance and support instructional practices, but that's the only four words about instruction. And everything else is deter criminal activity, violations of school district policies, rules, and regulations. The surveillance camera system will not be used in any other capacity without the approval of the superintendent or designee, okay? But still, viewing of digitally recorded images will be limited to administrators or their designees, campus police officers, and school resource officers. Parents can't see it unless they ask special permission pretty please. So that's a big part of it. We've been talking about surveillance, okay? Now, and like, nobody will see it. We won't be evaluated, you know, nobody can like, this is the most secure system, IT system that the district has. I remember that as, you know, something that was said, okay, in negotiations, but anyway. But the thing is surveillance, okay? So are we then going to have a separate system for classroom instruction? Because you also have a policy. Yeah, I'm a wonk.
And Ms. Lester, I'm going to give you additional time, but I'm going to give you additional time since I interrupted you, but I just wanted to give you...
Okay, so I really, three minutes is not as long as I thought it was. JGGA videotapes that are records of student behavior shall be considered a student record. I mean, if you're videotaping me in my class, you're videotaping my students' behavior. I mean, you are, because if they're in the class, they are behaving, and sometimes not so nicely. So...
Ms. Lester, and I'm sorry, we're at time. Thank you. But we'll make sure that we pass along the documents that you've brought for the full board.
One more thing. All of the opinion surveys where the teacher said they were okay with it were surveillance, safety, and security.
Thank you, Ms. Lester. Our next comment will come from Ms. Chavette Dinkins. And as she's coming to the microphone, I do just want to give you your kudos. Congratulations on completing Leadership Kansas and for your graduation to that. That is amazing.
Since we give in kudos, I just want to say Wyandotte is in the house, and thanks to Ms. Dinkins and her great work, we're excited to have you in our district.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chavette Dinkins. I'm the president of the Wyandotte High School PTSA, and I'm here on behalf of the Wyandotte High School PTSA. We are asking the school board and the district to host a roundtable conversation with our families and our communities about cameras in the classroom. We do not believe that this money is being well-spent, and the efforts will not enhance safety or security in our building. However, our biggest concern is there was lack of transparency and awareness with our families and our students. Our big ask is that you bring this roundtable conversation to parents, students, and staff about safety and instructional purposes of cameras at Wyandotte High School. Our mission at PTSA is to provide every child with the potential to have reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. By having these roundtable conversations with our parents, we'll make them aware, and we can all make these plans together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dinkins. Our next comment will come from Mr. Dom DeRosa, and he is joining us via Zoom.
Excuse me, I'm sorry about that. Perfect timing for that. Sorry. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lopez, and the board members. Thank you for letting me speak virtually tonight. I would like to start my comments about the overall decision-making process in KCKPS. Everyone is aware of the importance of including all stakeholders in creating policy. Including all stakeholders early in the process can strengthen the collaborative perspective on the process. With a strong collaborative process in place, we can build stronger relationships with the different stakeholder groups. We NEAKCK are committed to being an integral part of this collaborative process with the board, the administration, and the community. I'm speaking tonight to share our association's focus on the idea of cameras in the classrooms. We recognize that there are benefits that can be derived from the use of video cameras. We also must recognize that it comes equipped with a potential for abuse. What we want to do is avoid the unforeseen consequences. There are serious privacy concerns that impact students and staff that must be addressed. We are looking forward to the work of our joint committee that has been tasked to attempt to address the concerns with appropriate policies, protocols, and procedures. Dr. Jack Hassard of Georgia State University wrote, quote, "Video can be a very effective tool for teachers only if they are in control of how, when, and why video technology is used in their classroom." Yes, we all understand that the use of cameras in education can be beneficial for both students and staff if used correctly, and as Dr. Hassard stated, teachers should be included in the process of how, when, and why. I used to teach in a classroom that was equipped with cameras. I used the technology to improve learning for both the students and myself, and students were often intimidated by the cameras in the room. They thought being on camera stifled their willingness to take chances with being wrong, or they felt they had to perform for the camera, all which interfered with their learning process. However, when we could demonstrate, when I could demonstrate that we had control of the cameras and how the students could be assured that they were not being recorded, so the learners themselves can relax and allow the learning environment to be safe, inclusive, open, and beneficial for their own learning processes. The National Education Association believes that education employees must be guaranteed the right of privacy, including freedom from audio or video surveillance without prior written permission of the individual. While there may not be expectations of privacy when the teacher is on duty teaching or while supervising students, there should be an expectation of privacy when one is on their personal time, before and after school, and during their personal plan times. There are many times when a teacher needs to have confidential conversations with parents or other team members or other personal contacts during that personal plan time. Not having control of the cameras take away that protection. Yes, we NEAKCK and the district agree that footage will not be used in the evaluative process. However, there is a real concern that viewing camera footage would affect the evaluative process to the point where it would be inequitable.
Dom, I'm sorry to interrupt. We are at time, so I apologize for interrupting you. But we are at time. I just wanted to make sure you got in that last point. Thank you so much for joining us, Dom. That concludes our comments for tonight. As is process, we will have someone from our leadership team, Dr. Campbell or her team, will reach out to all those that have provided comment for further questions or concerns, and then we will follow up with our board clerk, and information will be given to the full board regarding the comments made tonight. And again, thank you to everybody for joining us tonight, for providing comment, and for those that are here, both in person and online. We'll continue with our agenda. Our next agenda item is the report from Kansas City, Kansas Libraries, and Ms. Carol Levers with our quarterly report.
I don't think she has a, is Carol?
Good evening, board, and thank you, Mr. Lopez. That's not a report. It's just our quarterly, actually, report for Turner, just for the board to accept.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to accept the Turner Quarterly Report?
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions for Ms. Levers?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms.?
So in the questions, there was a question around the library project, but it wasn't answered. Who are the board member representatives for the library project?
To my, I don't know if board members have been assigned, but Ms. Drew and Ms. Humphries have been attending the meetings, to my knowledge. The committee existed before I came, but I do know the two of them have been at all of the meetings. But I don't know if it was formal, like, that, I didn't answer it because I didn't know who...
No, we were not assigned. We just chose to be in attendance to hear what was going on.
Okay. My question around that is, is the last time this came up, we talked about board member representation, and I'm fine if they're agreeing to go to those meetings, but I do think it's important, very similar to all of our committee work, that at least somebody has an idea of what's going on before it's presented to us, and they can speak to the board perspective somewhat before bringing it to us. I think that's important. That will help us reduce questions, things that we know have been discussed as a board moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Let me follow up with that train of thought, if I'm following your train of thought. So have you all attended a meeting thus far recently?
Yes.
And the date was when?
There was one on Monday.
Monday. It was there on Monday.
So, Mr. Lopez, one would think that, and this is probably not the location on the agenda, however it is related, one would think that they would provide us some feedback as to, you know, you're saying provide the board perspective. What is the board perspective?
And there is a library update happening. At the last meeting when we discussed this, the board voted to have quarterly updates around the main branch library. There is one scheduled at the November 15th meeting with Ms. Levers, and the committee will bring the information forward. To my understanding, that's when that is happening.
That's correct.
At that same meeting, it was my interpretation, that board would be an active participant in those conversations. I've, I know I said for myself, I would like to know when those meetings are. I did not get that information, so. That is the board perspective that I'm giving, is that I thought it was, we were saying, it would be an open invitation to board members to attend, but that does not seem to be what has happened, I guess, so.
Thank you, and I think part of it is, we also have to be careful with how many board members attend certain meetings to make sure that we are not in violation of Kansas Open Meetings Act. If you have more than four or more board members, and I think that's part of it. Also, I think part of my understanding was that the board president and vice president had been attending those committee meetings. I have not, just for the sake of removing myself from those committee meetings. So I believe at one point, my name was listed on the committee, but I have not attended those committee meetings, again, just for the sake of impartiality during the library conversation with the board.
I think after the November 15th update or during that time, just for clarity in the future, the, Ms. Levers, if you can bring, because I think they meet fairly regularly, about the same time, if we can provide all of those dates to the entire board, and if the board is in agreement, if Ms. Humphries and Ms. Drew, and I guess there's space for one more, whoever that third person is, then everyone is on the same page about the meetings moving forward. Because I think there were some assumptions made, and I think there were some people who were carryover from previous committee meetings, which is how they got invited. But I think just for clarity, if, for that, Ms. Levers can give everyone the dates that they'll meet in the future, and then the board can be in agreement on the three who will attend those meetings in the future.
I have a question for Mr. Gohine. What are the guidelines for COMA when it is not a board meeting?
If it's a public meeting, which would include not just board meetings, but a committee meeting, a board committee, those are all governed by COMA. They have to have, they're open, public meetings. They have notice requirements under COMA. So that, and, if they're...
Right, we know that, but fast forward to the number of board members.
Yeah, so you can only have three, up to three board members on a committee, because if you add a fourth board member to a committee, that makes it a board meeting, which has slightly different rules. But if it's a public meeting, any other board member can attend the meeting. They just cannot participate as a committee member.
Correct.
They can participate, or they can be there as a member of the audience.
Now, is this a board committee?
That I don't know. I don't know if this is a committee that was set up by the board or if this is one that was set up by some other, I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, that's homework. Well, that's homework for you. So that would go back to your point, I believe, Ms. Russell, that however three that are attending, the rest could be in the audience, and you don't violate COMA.
That's correct.
I would agree. I also am under the understanding that it is not a formal board committee. It is just like when we go to events and we're all there, that is similarly what this is, because it is not governed by board members, it is not facilitated by board members, and that's where I think we can take this offline and have a different conversation, because I think that's where I'm disagreeing with your comment, but also trying to understand the implications of all of it, so.
Well, that's why I asked for clarity, because it does not violate. If other people are there, it does not violate a COMA, correct?
That's correct, as long as they're not members of the committee.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goheen. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
And do we get an update? If they're there on behalf of the board, after the meeting is over, do we get some kind of written update to say what happened? What happened at the meeting? I mean, we're the board. We ought to know.
So I think that's what Dr. Stubblefield was saying. After the November 15th meeting--
Well, I know that's the 15th, but I'm saying after all the other meetings that they've attended--
After the November 15th meeting, we can set up how those updates will come, once we set up the committee members.
Okay, well, you're saying that they're the committee members, and should we? I'm just asking--
I wasn't saying they were the committee members.
Well, they're the two that's going.
They've been attending, but they have not been assigned by the board as committee members.
So they're just going on their own? And when do we get to know? Because we never knew about it, when the meetings were.
Right, and I think, and that's why I said on the 15th, we probably need some clarity. When you go back and look historically at the minutes, like when we were planning to bring the recommendation forward, there were board members who were attending previously, and I think those invitations just went out to those people who were on, who attended in the past. I don't think, and I'll just say this from my perspective, I don't think that there was any intentionality to exclude anyone, but I think there just weren't clarity around expectations on who would attend or why they were attending. But when I look at previous minutes, I honestly, I saw both Ms. Humphries and Ms. Drew's names from years, however many years ago, and I've seen other board member names that either are no longer a part of the board and that kind of thing. But I do think moving forward, we can get some clarity on that, and then like expectations around updates or communication around that, and in addition to the quarterly update that Ms. Levers will bring with the committee members who are on there each quarter.
So the last question, is there a meeting between now and the 15th?
Ms. Levers, is there a meeting between now and the 15th?
I think there's one the 14th.
Time and location, for the record?
Same place, at the main library, and nine o'clock.
We'll make sure we get that emailed out to the full board. Any other questions or discussion? Saying none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, our board updates and approval. Board, these items have come before us previously, and they are up for action tonight if it is the will of the board. First up, we have our back snack program. It's recommended to, that the Board of Education approve, the MOU between KCK Public Schools and new Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. for Banneker Elementary School.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of Exam Spark subscription in the amount of $149,000, as submitted by Dr. Zachary Conrad, Dr. Judith Campbell, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, it's recommended that Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase of SWY E360 in the amount of $159,600, as submitted by Dr. Zachary Conrad, Dr. Judith Campbell, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Saying none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of new AV systems for F.L. Schlegel High School cafeteria, peace room, and library for, from Kansas City Audio Visual in the amount of $79,984, as submitted by Wayne Correll, Steve Lilly, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next agenda item E, it's recommended that Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the updated anticipated cost in the amount of $1,517,064 for the addition of a passenger, elevator, and lifts at Washington High School, as submitted by Doug Clements, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Saying none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item F, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the low bid in the amount of $1,697,971 from Stranger Industries to replace two chillers at F.L. Schlegel High School and two chillers at Eisenhower Middle School, as submitted by Wayne Correll, Steve Lilly, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Saying none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, under New Business, item number eight, Agenda Item A. These items, all of these items under the New Business are for informational purposes tonight. The board has received full information. There is no presentation slated, but I know we have some information around Agenda Item A, and I know there are some questions from board members, so we'll make sure that we have answers to those. Again, there is no action being asked of the board tonight. This is for informational purposes. We will gather questions, comments, and discussion from tonight, and these agenda items will come back at a future board meeting. The first one is regarding classroom cameras, and I will hand it off to Dr. Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank all of those who have sent communication to myself and the board, sharing their perspective around cameras in the classroom, and also want to thank all of those who spoke tonight for sharing their perspective. I do just want to add some context around the recommendation this evening, and then say what myself and my team as the leadership at the district are committed to. First, I want to say this, according to my understanding, this conversation started several years ago, and then finally in the 2021 negotiations, there was some agreement around what cameras would be allowed in the classroom, all classrooms. I do want to be clear about, there are cameras in our classroom currently, and there are cameras in several spaces. As Mr. DeRosa shared, he had cameras in his classroom, and there are other teachers who use it for a variety of reasons. So I don't, I am not, you know, I just want all of us to act, have a common understanding around a few things. Secondly, the conversation around safety and security was a real conversation. We, however, when I came on board, when we were looking at the challenges that we were facing with the teacher shortage and some other things, I was made aware that the district purchased several two-way cameras that are in several of our high schools now, so that teachers can teach in one location and kids in the other location who may not have a highly qualified staff member in that location would have access to that. So when we looked at the SIR dollars that were allocated to us, and we also, I will also share, we have put on hold some requests to purchase cameras in isolated buildings in classrooms for teachers who were requesting to use them in that manner, and we were looking at it from a more systematic way. While I fully acknowledge the component around the surveillance and security being a product, byproduct of that, that was not honestly what myself and my team spent the time on, and as Mr. DeRosa shared, there has been a joint committee that has had conversation, and there were three different vendors that came in and shared that information with the team, and the focus was around the vendor that could provide more of the academic support. So with that, there was a question around the SIR dollars and how it can be leveraged differently. Everything that was on the list, we submitted to the state, and those things that we got approved for, we have moved forward with, and we continue to get feedback from a variety of people around how to use the SIR dollars. This, the lack of teachers in the classroom, the opportunity for more professional development was a part of that. So this is something that, you know, it's at the pleasure of the board when they make the decision. We, in either way, you know, whether they formally move forward with this, I just want everyone to be clear about, there are cameras in our classroom, our students are recording, there are recording devices in the classroom, and that's just a reality of what we live with today. So regardless if the board approves this or not, we need to have some conversations around what that means and what it doesn't mean, and also recognizing that Kansas, you are allowed to record without given permission. That's legal, and we know of specific cases of our students recording things on a one-way device for their parents, and I'm just being completely transparent around that. So my last comment is, what we will commit to between now and when the board takes this up as a vote, we will send out a thought exchange to our high school students, all of our staff members, and our parents to get their perspective on that, on what their opinions around that. I, coming in as a new superintendent, I don't know what the conversations were before I got here. I know last year, there was a joint committee, and my understanding was, this was an agreement at the table, and we were moving forward with that. So we will be happy to send out a thought exchange. It will come from Mr. Birch's office, and we'll have it launched probably by Thursday in order to give high school students, because they do have a perspective in this, and often have been engaged in the conversations about what education looks like for them, our staff members, and also our parents, and we will present that. So with that, I will pause, and if there are any other specific questions, I will try to answer them. I know the vendor is also online, if there are specific technical questions, and Dr. Campbell and others who have served on the committee may be able to step in if specific questions come up around that.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, and I know there were some questions from board members that were emailed. I believe some of those were responded for everyone. They should be in the board library for you to review, but as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, we will now open up for questions or clarification from board members. Ms. Page?
I have a question. I have a comment. Because of all the people that came and the concern about whether we really opened that up and allowed parents, students, and everyone, I think we should have an open meeting. Do the virtual, have an open meeting, because it's hard to come in here and have three minutes to speak, and they had a lot to say. I think we owe them, to give them the opportunity to share. Maybe there's some things we missed, I don't know, but I think they deserve an opportunity to speak in person, as well as a virtual setting. If you can't make this, you can make that, and have an open conversation, so we won't have to hear, well, they didn't even let us talk. We came, we had three minutes. So give them the opportunity to share, and we want to make sure that we conversate. What do you think we're missing? How can we make it better? And to try to have a conversation with each other and take more time to explain our side. So I would like to make a motion. I don't know if we need a motion for this, but I'd like to make a motion that we provide a setting to have a conversation in person, as well as virtual, to discuss the camera issue.
Second.
So there is a motion, and I just want to make sure to get the motion correctly for our clerk, motion to provide a setting for conversation to discuss the camera, the use of cameras, or installation of cameras in the classrooms, and there was a second by Ms. Russell, and I didn't mean to cut you off.
But the one part, I said, I wanted an in-person and virtual.
In-person and virtual.
Give people an opportunity. If you can't make it to the meeting, at least there's a virtual meeting that you can click on and come to, because if my understanding is correct, I ask you this, maybe somebody else can answer it. I don't think that money has to be spent until the 20, the year 2024. So we do have some time to have a discussion, to listen to people, so we don't have to hear people say, well, they decided this, they didn't even give us a chance to speak. So they would have some time to speak, and we can listen and try to look at what the concerns are, and maybe be able, when we do finally bring it, we can look at the pros and the cons, and what the concerns are.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I was gonna echo that thought, that I did hear hybrid as an option. I, I thought, or my friendly amendment, was to hold a special meeting so that all of us can be present, and we don't have to worry about COMA. We can set aside however long we need, three hours. This goes back to the listening and learning part. So before this proposal came forward, we knew it was going to have a reaction. It is important for us to continue to be proactive in those situations, to hear the other sides. I don't believe that I have seen that, but that is my ask for this board, and when we have these controversial things, that we be proactive in hearing from our community and all of our constituents. My question is, it has been said, there is board member representation on this joint committee. Who are those board members that are participating in this committee?
The members were Ms. Page and Ms. Clark, who was on the committees.
So that committee has gotten together since the start of this school year to bring this forward. Both of you were present.
I can only speak for myself. I was not, so that's, that's a whole again.
Okay. With that, Mr. Lopez, if I could just have a few remarks?
Absolutely.
I want to first thank the individuals that shared their perspectives and feedback with me, both personally and publicly, on this item at hand. As a reminder, and as it's been mentioned, SIR $3s were intended to be used with community feedback. I don't believe that I heard nor recall in any of the listening and learning sessions, nor on the thought exchange platform, or was it explicitly shared in the budget that classroom cameras were something we were using SIR $3s for? So where did the community say they wanted this as a way to address student learning post-pandemic? As a newly elected board member, this item caught me completely off guard, as it did many members of our staff and community. It is my strongest belief that decisions like these should solicit intentional feedback from all impacted stakeholders. Unfortunately, this does not appear to be the case. We cannot use unsolicited data from our beloved KNEA as engagement. While I recognize that the survey was split, it does not reach all parties impacted. Many parents don't even know this is a discussion item. Many parents don't even know this is a discussion item. Why is that? Is this the true community and family engagement that we are striving for? While the notion that our students are already monitored in the common areas may be the current case, how many minutes of the day are students in those places? Thirty, forty, fifty minutes of the day compared to an eight-hour day of pure surveillance? As mentioned in an email by one of our constituents, where else are people surveillance all day? Banks, retail shops, and the like. Why? Because there is a risk of theft. As a parent, my children and other middle, high school students enter a school building and walk through metal detectors every day. And now cameras? When do our children get an opportunity to be a kid that goes to a world-class facility? This proposal indeed gets us closer to the ideology that already exists, that our students are walking into prisons to get the education that they truly deserve. Recognizing the safety components and needs in our district is not anything that I take lightly, but this is not the solution. In closing, questions around the logistics and operations are not available. I have many concerns about the intended use, the consequential use, and the financial investment. However, many of our staff and buildings lack proper funding and the basic and essential items to manage a school or classroom day-to-day. While I recognize the potential opportunities that this may present, I'm not certain that this will have a direct impact on student achievement post-pandemic. I encourage this board and administration to identify other means to redirect this $6.7 million to directly impact student achievement in our district.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Thank you, Ms. Russell. And just for clarity, did you want to make a friendly amendment to the motion? Or you mentioned that, so I, and I wrote it down, so I just want to make, or do you want to just, I mean, if there's, we can call a special meeting. I don't know that we necessarily need to amend the agenda, but we can make sure that it is a special meeting so that the full board can be present. But since you mentioned it, I just wrote it down. So I'll, I'll make sure that it is a special meeting for the board. Okay, thank you.
So Lopez, I have questions.
Ms. Clark.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, by no means am I trying to shut down hearing from the community, but I'm trying to figure out how that quantifies the voice. So we have, we have our community come, they talk, they express their feelings, whoever, whoever comes, but then how does that still quantify what our, what our students, what our staff really, really wants versus the data and the numbers that are able to back up this decision? So I, I do have questions around that. I think I'm okay with listening, but we still have to quantify what, what we need, and I'm not sure how that will do that. So if someone can help me understand that, I would love that.
I think if you do that in conjunction with the thought exchange, so we can hold off on the thought exchange until you have that, and we can share that, because whether you're present or not, you can still give your perspective around what the broad questions you can ask, the simple question around, do you support having cameras in the all classrooms? Because I do want to make it clear, there are cameras in our classrooms, not just our common spaces. I am not, I'm just presenting all of the facts. I also think that once you do that, you know, you can ask the general question, have each individual identify their role, and that'll give you the data broken down. And then you can have a space for around what are the benefits, challenges, challenges and barriers, and then you can see trends, and you can also know the breakdown of if everybody's like, no, or everyone is yes. I will say, and I respect the, all of the perspectives, I see both sides. I will say, I do think this is something that the sooner you can have the conversation, because while the money can be spent until September 2024, if the board chooses to go that direction, the installation takes a while. If the board is not going to go into that direction, we do need to reallocate the money, because either way, we have to spend the money by September of 2024. And while that sounds like it's a long time, a lot of things, from computers to resources, are on backorder. So this is not something that, I would encourage the board to get the feedback and make a decision, you know, as soon as possible, so that regardless of what the perspective is, people, it's not something that is drug out for a very long time.
Okay, thank you so much. That was, that was definitely one of my first questions. And then a lot of times when we have those platforms, we get a lot of the repeat voices. And so I just, if we're going to go that direction, we've received lots of letters, we have lots of representation here, and much appreciated, but how do we ensure that if we're going to go the direction of having people come in, that we are hearing from others versus, again, repeat voices? Because a lot of the, what I've received are people that are not for it, and so I'm curious about those, because I'm sure there is, there are people out there that maybe are leaning more towards cameras. So I, I want to see all perspectives and just not the same.
But how do you get, I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
But you still, the people want to talk, and we have to be fair, whether it's the same people, and remember, they had three minutes. You didn't hear from everybody. Can you tell me you heard for, we got 19,000 students, you heard from 19,000 people in the, I'm just asking.
Well, that's my comment about the survey, because the survey reaches out to everyone, and so that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, but not everyone fills the survey out, and then maybe they would prefer to come in here and speak. I think we need to give them that opportunity.
Ms. Page, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong, if you just let me finish my sentence. I'm not saying that you're incorrect. I just want to make sure, as we have the listening tour, that we make sure that it is communicated to all, and that we're not necessarily, not that we don't value their thoughts, we've, we've heard them. So how do we broaden that, how do we broaden that audience to make sure that we're hearing from more? If we're opening the survey to high school students, I want our high school students to know that they have a platform to come and speak on. That's what I'm saying. Secondly, yes, the survey will be there, and then we can quantify by data. So I'm not dismissing your suggestion. I just want to understand and make sure that we hear and have a very broad net for both.
I get that, but you still open it up, even if it's the same people who are in this back room. If they show up, give them an opportunity to ask more. I heard what you said. I'm just saying, let's open it up and give them time to speak. No, I don't expect them to stay here till 12 o'clock at night, but they walked up here, they had three minutes to speak. So that's, I'm just saying, let's give them more time.
I will repeat, just so we don't walk away and anyone does not misquote me. I completely agree. If we want to give a platform for people to speak, I 100% agree. If the same people want to come back, I 100% agree. Yolanda would also like to make sure that it has been communicated very broadly, so that everyone has an opportunity to hear what it's saying in an in-person platform. I am not saying I disagree. I am saying I 100% agree. I do want it to be a broad communication, so that no one can say they did not know.
And thank you for saying that. And that's the same thing I'm saying. Let's open it up. I don't care who comes in here. Open it up.
I'm done.
Yeah, I feel you.
I think we're saying the same thing. Dr. Nguyen, yes?
I would respond to your question as broadening that survey. So you send it to high school students. I mean, that's what I'm hearing from you. Then there are other sectors of our community. I don't know how you, you know, direct that, that to, you don't want a spokesman.
Exactly.
You want, you want to broaden, if I understand you, that you want to broaden the response. And so that would then require us to get the message out to, to more people, also maybe have different, different vehicles that they can respond.
Dr. Nguyen, that is really all I, I am saying, is just make sure that we have a broad net. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I appreciate you.
I appreciate you.
Ms. Clark, did you have additional questions?
That is all.
Okay. Ms. Humphries?
You said that we're having enough and enough on November 17th?
Yes, J.C. Harmon.
Is there any way we can combine this with that, where people can come and give their thoughts, since we already have an event planned? Or is it, or do you already have too much stacked up on it?
I'm looking at Dr. Wilson, because he and his team were planning.
I would suggest to, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I would suggest to keep them separate, since they are both very important topics, and I'm sure that we will, we will have a lot of folks that will attend both, but my suggestion is that we would allow time for each of the conversations to happen separately.
I would suggest, with that in mind, we know the way that best fits our community is to also provide a meal during this. So let's not just, I mean, that session is doing similar things, let's not just make it another conversation, but while people are sitting around for two or three hours, depending on how many people show up, let's be inclusive like we would any other time. I have just a couple of comments. Repeat voices, we heard it today. Retaliation, whether we want to believe it or not, people speak out and they get shut down here at central office, here in our building, across our district. We talk about culture, we have prioritized culture, we have to prioritize, our leaders no longer doing that, or they have to go. That is why people, the same people show up every single time, because they're willing to put it all on the line, because they're tired of it. They are tired. They are committed to this district, and they are tired of others not having a place to speak, because there is retaliation that happens.
Rachel, I, so I, I, I'm just going to push pause, because I think this conversation is really starting to create this us versus them versus multiple.
This is a board meeting, though, right?
Right, but, but, but we're not, we're, we all are a part of Kansas, Kansas Public Schools, and we're all on the same.
I'm an elected official, and I can have.
And I respect that.
Don't silence me.
I'm not silencing you, Rachel. I'm just saying it's going off track. When you start to demonize leaders, for, and this conversation started out about cameras in the classroom, that impacts culture.
That's what the culture study said.
So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to push pause really quick.
We want to push pause on something because we can't have an honest conversation.
No, but I'm saying you're starting, you're saying leaders have to go. Like, when, when leaders hear that, that's the main problem with why our teachers and our families are frustrated. When you look at how much leadership has changed from the district level to the building level, if you do any research, the most impactful people are the leaders. But when you're saying leaders have to go and leaders leave, you're going to be right back here. That's why this camera conversation has been going on for four years, because there's been shifts in leadership. So I don't disagree with you, and I'm not trying to silence you. I do want to be respectful of everybody's time in this board meeting. If we're going to have a special board meeting about that, let's have that conversation there, because there are several items on this agenda. I want you to finish, but I just cannot sit back and hear you say that, just in general, talk about leaders in that way, when the, the survey said that, and it also said some other things. But we don't have to demonize our leaders. It talked about our educators, it talked about the commitment, it talked about the board. Everybody in here had something to own in that survey where we can grow and learn. And once we all get on the same page and know that we are not in competition with each other, we're not, none of us have to be right, we have to do what's right. If the cameras don't go, I'm, it's, I, I'm not going to lose any sleep. If the cameras go forward, we'll make sure we operationalize it. But what impacts the culture the most is when we pit ourselves against one another. I respect everything every last one of those teachers said, and I honor what they say. And if that is their truth, that's their truth. It does not mean that we have to demonize each other. It doesn't mean that this, we didn't just make this up. This stuff came about over several years, and most of us in this room who are bringing this forward was not even a part of the district, but it fell in our lap, and we have to navigate it. So I just want us to get past blaming each other and have, and be able to engage in civil discourse and have different perspectives and find some common ground and move forward.
Do we have a motion?
There is a motion on the floor, and Ms. Russell, if you had some additional comments, questions.
I did.
That you would like to share, please do so.
I will save them for another day.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional questions related to the motion on the floor? There's a motion that we have a hybrid in-person and virtual option for a discussion around cameras in the classroom. And I'm gathering that we would like to do this sooner rather than later, so that we can continue to move forward. So that motion is on the floor. Are there any other questions or discussion pertaining to the motion? I would only ask for clarification. I mean, I think if we want to get this done sooner, I know the holidays are coming upon us, but I think if we can get this done before the end of the calendar year, that would allow us to be able to take some time to organize and bring some information back to the board. I know there was a conversation about a thought exchange survey going out as well. It sounds like we can maybe push pause on that until we have the conversation and figure out how we can do the thought exchange survey as complimentary data and information for the board to consider around cameras in the classroom and the types of questions we want to ask in that survey, and who that survey will be available to. So again, just want to see, make sure, I know there's a committee around camera, a camera committee in place. I'm curious, from the board's perspective, and maybe we don't have to answer tonight, but how do we organize? Is it a board committee? Is it that committee? Do we allow administration and leadership team to work through and create what that forum will look like? I know it will be a special meeting, so that we can all be present and participate as board members. So just want to see if you all have any specific thoughts on, on that. And if not, then I can work with Dr. Stubblefield, Ms. Clark, and communicate with all, keep you all in communication to figure out what that's going to look like. Find it, miss, have Ms. Smith find a date that works for all of the board members and that works for community members and.
That works for me.
I would suggest you do it that way, because it's going to be public.
It will be a public meeting, absolutely. Dr. Nguyen, I see you have a question or comment?
Well, I have a question, I have a comment. I suggest collectively, we figure out the format, and there needs to be some clarification of what are you wanting comment on?
Yep.
And so, you know, I, I think we, we need to get on board and get our brains working and not leave it to, you know, with respect to administration, but take ownership.
I have a, a suggestion, and, and if this might work for the board, we do have a special board meeting next Thursday, I believe, or November 3rd. We can add that to the agenda to make sure that we discuss and plan and figure out what we want as a board.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, I, I, I agree. I definitely agree with Dr. Nguyen, because if not, it would be a very broad conversation, and we want to make sure, yeah, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So there is a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. We're going to take a quick 10-minute recess, and then we will reconvene here in 10 minutes. Thank you. We're gonna reconvene, so I'll give folks a moment to get back to our seats. I wanna keep us moving forward. Thanks for giving us a moment to take a quick stretch break. We'll continue on with our agenda. We are under agenda item number eight and we are now on item number B again, board. These are informational items only, so you should have all the information in front of you. Hopefully you had a chance to review it. If there are any questions around the Baksnak MOU, that is the next agenda item. Seeing none, we will continue on with agenda item C with the MOU with the Unified Government. Public Health Department, are there any questions for item 8C? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, 8D. Their, the request to purchase new cubicles for the third floor Central Office. Any questions for that agenda item? Thank you, seeing none. Item 8E for the solicitations for bids to replace air handling units. Four at Banneker, four at Emmy Pearson and eight at Quandero. Any questions on that agenda item? Seeing no questions, we'll continue moving forward. Item 8F, the solicitation for bids to install fencing and gates at 13 elementary school sites to enclose playground areas. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for these items. We'll come back before the board at a future board meeting, at the next board, regular board meeting potentially. All right, our next agenda item, agenda item number nine. We will hear our first quarter academic report. So I see Dr. Conrad coming to the microphone. I will stall for you until you get to the microphone. Good evening, Dr. Conrad, thanks for being here. And we look forward to hearing the information that you have presented, board. We can, there will be time for question and answer for Dr. Conrad. But if there's some clarifying questions or if there's a question you need to ask at the moment, please do. But I know Dr. Conrad has a presentation ready for us, so good evening, good to see you.
Thank you, President Lopez, Dr. Stubblefield, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to come today and speak about our first quarter data. I'm also going to present on summer school learning and the evaluation that took place that. So first, we'll start with, of course, how we are aligning our goals. And this is an image you guys are familiar with, how we align KISA and the accreditation process with our strategic plan.
He's not projecting that. Well, there you go.
There we go. And then our MTSS, which is embedded throughout everything, our school improvement plans and eventually leading to our goal. And we have also seen this, this slide before as well on how we are operationalizing some of these things. I exist in the data-driven decision-making portion of this, although I like to think I exist everywhere. It's really in there. So first, we wanted to start with the summer learning evaluation. You guys have two reports that I have attached in here and these are just gonna highlight what's in those two reports. One is a full-length report, the other is the summary report. We evaluated this in three ways. We did bring in a focus group. We had principals and teachers that were associated with summer learning. We also did internal assessments within the internal, internal assessments that was students just within summer school that were built. And then we also did fast bridge and we did fast bridge in two separate ways. And so we'll, we'll talk all about these three ways we evaluated it. So first with the focus groups, you notice that we had 19 total individuals, seven principals, 12 teachers. They came back with some of the positives. So the, the bonus or the incentive made it a lot easier to recruit and so that was much appreciated. And then they also recommended that we use the same building that the students are in during the school year, during summer school as well, that, that helped build those relationships. They also noticed that the kindergartners who attended summer school had an easier time adjusting. And so that was an added bonus there. We also looked at the internal assessments and these were assessments that were created by our curriculum and instruction team along with the teachers. We found that we did actually show positive results there as anticipated. It was a more sensitive instrument, so it was more directly tied to what was being taught in summer learning. And we did see those positive results. We also noticed that students that had graduated or are in the monitoring phase of English language proficiency outperformed all other categories, that that subgroup does really well. And we've, we've seen that pattern on our state assessments. When they exit ESOL programming, they excel. They, they do better than the, the rest of our subpopulations. We saw that again in summer school. We, they did have a suggestion to maybe align the assessments a little better or, or make them a little shorter so there's more instructional time. So we're working to see what, what that can look like as we move forward. Now the fast bridge results, we actually had two separate analysis here. We did a spring score to summer, end of summer score comparison. So the students that were in summer learning, we took their spring score and we compared it to where they ended up in the summer, at the end of summer learning. We did see an improvement there. That's a less sensitive tool and so we were surprised a bit to see that significant difference there, but we did see that. And then we also compared the spring score, and this is what kinda delayed us a little bit for getting this report, to the fall score. And so we, we needed to wait until students finished the fall score. But we compared them a little differently. We took two groups, one that was in summer school or summer learning and one that was not. And we matched them up. And so we did propensity score matching and we tried to match on all the demographics and assessment scores so that we were comparing like students, as like as we could get them. And one set of them got the treatment, one set didn't get the treatment, right, of summer learning. We compared their score to the fall. And we didn't find much of a difference there, there wasn't a significant difference there. And so this is actually an area that we wanna explore more because we could see that during the learning, during that summer learning time, we saw an impact. But then everybody got, you know, another month off and we're wondering if that wasn't, what kinda watered down the effects long-term. But we need to explore that a little more to see how we can get that summer learning impact to be more long-lasting. So that's something that we continue to explore through the data. We do have some areas, some suggestions for room for growth. And this really came out of the focus groups. We have already started planning for next year to address some of these issues, to make sure it's a little smoother and there's more clarity around how we are delivering it. And so before I move on, I do wanna pause to see if there's any questions over a summer learning and the evaluation that took place.
Dr. Nguyen?
Yeah, please.
So of your two test groups, were they taught the same, I say, did you evaluate the same subject from one, from summer to fall?
Yes, it, it was the same assessment.
Okay, same assessment. And the curriculum was aligned to standards?
The curriculum in summer learning was aligned to standards, yes.
And the curriculum in fall was aligned to standards?
Yes.
Okay, so what is your thought about no carryover?
So initially, and it's just a hypothesis, that, that month in there or five weeks in between, five, six weeks in between, when summer learning ended and the start of the school year began, still has an effect on student learning to the degree that we've still lost some in there.
Okay, so if summer loss, learning loss is, is a factor, what can you do then in summer school to address that?
That's exactly what we're exploring now.
Well, the crazy thing is that this is not the first time people had summer school. So where, where are you looking for solutions?
Well, we have to explore the data more and try to disaggregate it as much as we can to pinpoint if there was any highlights, if a particular group might have seen some growth over other groups. And so we're still going through some of that disaggregated data to find some of those highlights to, to give us some indication of what might have worked or what, what those characteristics are.
There's a whole library full of studies, I'm sure, about summer learning loss.
Yes, there is.
So what are you looking at for, I mean, you're gonna have a different set of students.
Next year.
Right, so, so what are you looking at? What kinda data are you looking at? I mean.
The data that we currently have on our students.
You already have that. They didn't, they didn't, you didn't see the growth?
We're slicing and dicing it in new ways to try to find anything that, of significance. Right now, it's an exploratory analysis.
Okay, so are you doing any exploratory analysis of research that is, that's about summer's learning loss?
Yeah, I mean, we, we stay abreast of that research that's been done on summer learning loss to guide us forward on what we can possibly do in the future.
Because you can only dice your, your, your subjects so many ways.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna exhaust that, you're right.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to hearing the, the research that you have analyzed and, and diced up for planning for next summer. Because we need, we need a solution. It's not the first time summer school's ever occurred.
It's not, it's not, but we're, we're hoping to make database decisions around it specifically using our data. But we're hoping to make database decisions around it, specifically using our data. And so there's a lot of research out there that may or may not align to our students in our situation. There's some useful things that we can implement. But we really want to make database decisions for our kiddos to make sure that it's spot on.
And I understand that, because we're not going to just throw a rock and see where it lands. So that's given.
We'll be strategic as possible with it. Yep.
Looking forward to it.
Okay.
I've got another, so how many, you had on one of these slides, 1,800, 1,900 elementary students were served at the total, that attended summer school?
The students? No, we had, I think, over 4,000 elementary students in summer learning.
On the internal assessments, you say that, excuse me, pre- and post-test, 1,894 elementary students, 843 middle schools. So was that?
That we had clean data on, that we had pre- and post-test data on. And so that's one of the areas that we have to have more robust data collection and set those expectations forward on attendance and on collecting that data.
So you say we had 4,000 students total?
Over 4,000 students.
But only 2,000, only half, data had, half of them?
Yeah.
And why is that?
It was the way that the data was collected. It could have been the student wasn't present that day. And so that they didn't lose more instructional time. They moved on, and the student just missed that assessment, that data point.
So half of the students did not, you did not have a pre-test and a post-test data on half of the students, 2,000 students who attended. How long was summer school?
Correct.
How long was summer school?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. And so they pre-tested. And if students didn't join summer learning until the third day or the fourth day, we didn't collect that data point on them.
So it was only one day for a pre-test and one day for a post-test?
That I can't speak to, but I believe so.
Okay.
Post-test was the same thing. So if students didn't show up that last week, or if they were absent on that day, it happened that way.
Okay, thank you.
So did attendance play a big part of not being able to collect some of the data? Because not everyone felt, or not everyone ensured that their child came every day, maybe?
Yeah, and you'll notice that in the full report, where we talked about how we narrowed down which students were included in the study. And we did have quite a few students that were not there more than 50% of the time. And so that does limit it. But we excluded them from the analysis, because we felt like that didn't give the teacher really the opportunity to teach the full breadth of it, and it would water down our results.
So one of the things that you may be looking for for next summer is how to increase the attendance and
Absolutely.
communicate to the parents how important summer school is.
Yeah, and that's that first bullet point, where we really need to emphasize and clarify the behavior and the attendance are a must.
How much did summer school cost? Or what was our, what is our estimated, how much did we spend on four weeks of summer school?
I'm actually not positive. I'm sure that it was board-approved, and so it'd be in the minutes somewhere.
Well, I think it came to us in different snippets. I would like to see that information, because what I also hear you saying is we have zero highlights from any part of that investment. And that's a little concerning.
Oh, I must have not clarified that. I think that we actually did hit our goals of this. And on this screen, we did see improvement in scores, pre-, post-test, and on FastBridge, spring to the end of summer. We saw those improvements. And that FastBridge improvement actually surprised me that that was significant. But it was there. And so the one that we didn't see was then we put a window where nobody was in school, and then tested again this fall, and we didn't see a difference. And so that was the one thing that we need to see if we can increase that longevity. But we definitely saw it.
The FastBridge was administered during the summer? Or it was administered, then it was administered again to those same group of students in the fall?
Yeah, everybody took it this fall. Everybody took it last spring. We matched them all up. But everybody takes it in the spring, fall, and winter.
We gave the same tests twice. Is that what I'm hearing?
They took the same test. And so the same student, the same group of students took the fall assessment.
Which one interpretation could be you overtested the students, which is why there's no change, correct?
So it is a different assessment, like the questions on there are different questions.
But it is in the same path. The structure of this test is the same regardless if the questions change, correct? Like, if I'm testing, if you're doing the ELA portion, it's asking you about sentence structure. The sentence structure question looked different on the summer test than it did the fall test, but it's still sentence structure.
It depends on the grade level. Because your younger grade levels, the skills and what it measures changes from spring to fall. It changes fall, winter, and spring. Once you get third grade and above, for the reading anyways, it looks and feels very similar. The math is always, grade-level math is where it starts you. And so as a third grader in the spring, we're all third graders. We all take the same third-grade spring assessment. I go to summer learning. I take the spring assessment that I would have taken a month or so ago, but it's adaptive, so I see different things. Then all of us are now in fourth grade, and we take the same fourth-grade assessment. And so what I was really looking for is I can match us on our third-grade scores. Then I can look to see how summer learning impacted our fall scores. You didn't go, but I did. So is my score going to be a little higher than your score, even though we started in the same place in the spring? And we saw that that score was pretty much the same. That wasn't statistically different.
So the impact of students who attended summer school and did not, did not change across the board?
Right, that longevity piece, hanging on to it. We could see that we make an impact when they're in front of us, and that we see that growth and that learning. And then they were not in front of us for a time, and we're concerned about that time period.
They're able to master the skill in that time frame, that long timeframe, but then the
Yeah, the short window that we're adding, we're seeing that. We're having an impact. Teachers are having an impact.
But then they forgot it.
It's just maintaining it. Yeah.
Thank you. That's the word I'm looking for.
For summer school, can they have an incentive? I know in some districts, if they complete summer school, they go to World's Fun, something. I'm just asking. I know they do it in some districts.
I think that's something that our planning committee needs to consider. And as we are talking about it moving forward, that's definitely something that's been brought to the table on how we structure that. But yes, definitely. Okay, we're going to move on to the first quarter data. Let me pull this back up. And I want to just mention that we collect a lot of data from students throughout the year. That helps us guide how to inform what we do. But it also helps guide students in understanding maybe where some of their gaps are, where they are excelling. And so when we do this, we need to make sure that we understand how to communicate effectively to students those gaps or where they're excelling, so that they can make appropriate decisions as well when it comes to their learning. And with all of this, I like the difference between formative and summative assessments. Formative is when the chef tastes the soup back in the kitchen. Summitive is when the customer tastes the soup. And when it comes to this data, I prefer to speak to students as though all data is formative data, and that we can do something with it. We still have time to do something with it. So I want to make sure, as we go through some of this data, that we set the tone and the conversation around formative and how to support the student in growing and improving, because it's all about this formative process. And all too often, I think some of our conversations become summative to students in labeling, this is who you are. Or they internalize it that way, and that can be a damaging process. And so we need to understand the data just a little carefully, right, to make sure we're communicating that correctly. So as I walk through some of this, I just want to preface it with that. And so one of the first things that I want to point out, we have state assessment data. The state assessment data does tell us something. This is data that students are walking into the school year with, that teachers can look at from last year to help guide some conversations with students. One of the things that we wanted to do is frame this data in a certain way to kind of help us understand how we can use it. One of the things that we did is, on the bottom, we have these categories of a low one and a high one, a low two and a high two. These are the state performance categories that I split in half. In our, one of our accountability measures, it actually puts it into those categories and splits it in half. I just labeled it this way. The orange bar represents students who go on to post-secondary success, or what the state sends back to us is those that have been successful. And the blue bar is those that have not met the success criteria of the state. The percentage is the percentage of students in each of those bars. And underneath it is the ACT score, the average ACT composite score of those categories. So we're going to look at performance category one, the low category one. 22% of those students continued on to be, to meet the success criteria of the state. 22% of them. They had an average score, ACT score of 13. If you look at the blue bar, 77% of those students in the low category one did not go on to meet the success criteria of the state. They had the exact same, just about 13, average ACT score. Something happened here with these students where they overcame barriers, and they persisted, and they showed up. And something didn't happen here. And we need to recognize that across the board, even if you're in low category four, we still had 20% of our students not meet the success criteria. That no matter where you land on this continuum, state-assessment-wise, we need to continue to find ways to remove barriers and support you to be successful. And so that's the message of, sometimes the state assessment will tell you, you are performance category one. But what we need to internalize is we need to offer additional supports, because you can make it. Like, we can find success here. We just need to understand how to overcome those barriers and do that. And so we are working with, closely with Diploma Plus, to have that conversation about, okay, we know you're here. What can we do to help remove barriers to make sure that you have the same successful outcomes? Because we know it's possible. We know they're doing it. And we just need to be a little closer with them to do that. We need to make sure that our building goal check-ins and those building goals that principals have set with their leadership teams are closely monitored and reported on. And we need to be clear about our messaging around that. So that at the end of this year, we might report out our threes and fours as proficient. But really, the conversation needs to be around, what are we doing to support all students across that continuum? It's not just, are you proficient, are you not proficient? That label is oversimplified. We need to really support all of our students to be successful here. And it needs to be a larger conversation, and not boil down to just two categories. We also looked at FastBridge data. And again, this is going to be in a larger narrative. So what we have here, we have it broken down by the school level. So all your elementaries are grouped together. I'm going to go over the data points first. So I took last year's data, where you started and where you ended, and I subtracted them. So in that difference from fall to spring, that's where you see that number. All I did was subtract the two, where you started, where you ended. Because what we need to be looking at as schools is if I do the exact same thing that I did last year, I should expect the exact same results. And if it wasn't good, then I need to do something different. And so looking at the difference from fall to spring lets me know, did I grow? Did my students grow? Did we do something that was working well? And then I also have where I ended. So that's the average spring A-reading percentile right there. So that's where I ended. And I grouped the schools. There are some schools that had high achievement and growth, some schools that had high achievement but didn't see the growth. We had some schools that had low achievement and also didn't see the growth. And we had schools that had low achievement and saw growth. On this side, we had ELA. And on the right side, we had math. We could see the math, we did much better. And we see this on our report card as well, on the state report card for state assessment scores, where math is a little bit more sensitive. In the moment, in COVID, we saw a drop, but it rebounded quicker. ELA, we didn't see the drop as fast, but now we're seeing the lingering effects of that. And we're not recovering as fast with ELA. And we're seeing that here as well with our FastBridge data. And so on the elementary side, we see that we do have schools that are making growth, that are low achievement but making growth. And they show up on both sides. There are six schools that show up on those both sides. We see that these three schools for elementary are showing up on both sides. And this is powerful for us, because there's something that's working there. We need to identify that. We need to get these schools together. And that's, we're working with the EDs of schools to really hone in and figure out, okay, what's going on, so that we can impact that change. And we see that elementary schools, again, where they were last year is the blue, where they are this year is the blue bar. Where they were last year is the orange bar, or the orange line. So we could tell schools, if you want to end up in the exact same spot that you did last year, just keep doing the same thing. But we got to be somewhere different. So we got to change something. So what is that that's going to change? And we need to keep watching that and making sure that the change is having the impact that we want. You see the same for middle schools and for high schools. They're really starting in the same spot that they were last year. Now that we know that, let's end up in a different location at the end of the year. So let's document what that's going to be, that's going to get us there. Race isn't the same story, though. We see that some are starting above. They rebounded. We see that some are still lagging behind. They're still experiencing those effects. But we're seeing that in both subject areas, both A-reading and in A-math. And so we need to tackle that. We see that they're coming in, starting at a lower location than where they were last year. So what are we going to do to boost them up? And so again, we're working with building administrators on their building goals to figure out what worked and what didn't work last year, so that we can duplicate that. And we're watching that throughout the quarter. So that when we come back next quarter, we'll be able to identify, hey, what is working, what's not working? How did we scale it? What does that look like? And so we'll want to be able to share that in the next board report on what we're doing there, on those specifics that we're doing. We also have Ds and Fs that we're monitoring. We know that this is impacted by grades or by attendance. And so these are first quarter, Ds and Fs. We have honed in on, I just did high school here, and we were able to hone in on specific schools, specific subject areas. CTE in science, in particular, biology, was rough for freshmen. And so we're able to drill down, so that we can go back and have more conversations about, okay, what can we do to support? And a lot of it goes back to this attendance piece. We also have by suspensions and by race. We see that there's a disparity. The disparity really follows the percentage of population within our district, or closely follows that. But we do want to narrow gaps there as well. So we still have some days to finalize these grades. So we're presenting this data, and this data can shift, because teachers are still going in and finalizing some of this within the system this week. And so And so we, we want to make sure that we'll bring back finalized data to our group to be able to look at that. We do want to focus on professional learning communities. This is where teachers really come together to discuss the data and can go back with action plans to help support students. And so we're focusing as a district leadership team on PLCs, not only with ourselves in the meetings that we have, but also with buildings. And then making sure that we are true to the MTSS process, that we're offering all the supports that we need.
Is there a time limit on when to get your work in?
There is.
Can you kind of give it?
Time limit for students or for teachers?
For students.
I, I believe that teachers do set time limits on when work needs to get done. But we also close the grading window. And so it does need to be submitted by a certain time so that teachers can then enter it, and we can then close that first quarter window so we can send out progress reports.
But you had, do, you do have data on the A, Bs, and Cs?
Yes, we do. Yeah, I was just focused on the Ds and Fs because we really need to offer additional supports there to make sure our students are being successful.
So can you share with us what then you, well, I'll continue with, so, so what is the, the strategy that you're going to use now? You say you're going to concentrate on the PLCs. A month, a couple of weeks? I mean, we'll be in second quarter, ending pretty soon, so what's going to happen?
No, the, the PLCs will be a focus, ongoing focus. And so I, I don't know that I can put a deadline on that.
No, I mean, just what specifically are they going to do?
Five years or?
I come back to what you're saying.
During the PLC group?
Yeah, what specifically are you going to do, hopefully, to, to impact student achievement? I mean, that's what you're going to do.
Yeah, so us, at, from a district level, we don't work with the students directly, right? And so we need to make sure that those that are working with the students directly are implementing and following best practices, especially when it comes to PLCs. And so we'll be going in and monitoring that when we can. We're still working out some of those details, though, on what that's going to look like to make sure.
I mean, identify those best practices. That's, I guess that's what I'm asking. What are the best practices you're going to use?
PLCs.
Right, but then that PLC is going to then take that onion, take another layer off to say, we're going to do X, Y, Z, hopefully, to improve this student performance.
Right, right. So teachers would then disaggregate that data. They'd look at their data. And then they would strategize plans on how to group the students together to get them the additional supports, change lesson plans as needed. I mean, there, there's a lot of options there for teachers to be able to look at that data, uncover the needs there. So if it truly is an attendance issue that's running into, or an engagement issue that is causing that F to happen for that student, that's where they collaborate together to identify that plan and put it into place.
I get the system, and we know the system, I guess. I'm asking, when it comes December, I want to see you did X, Y, Z best practice. And that if, that if it didn't work, then you're going to try something else. But just not that we're going to get around and?
Okay, so the, the way that we monitor, and I can bring back data to say, you know, we, we looked at it across the district, we looked at PLC minutes, we looked at, we, we went in and evaluated their effectiveness. We found that this group was really effective using PLCs. This group is still growing in their PLCs. What did student outcomes look like in this group compared to this group? So that we could evaluate, yeah, PLCs are working.
I would think you would also have some support. And if, if they needed help, I guess, Dr. Stubblefield, we have?
Yeah, and I think what Dr. Nguyen, and if I'm misinterpreting your question, you can correct me. So like, within the PLCs, if they say these students who are chronically absent, we've attached them with the, our A-to-A person, and they also have tutoring during FA time. Like, that, for those strategies that, the actual support that they're doing, is that progress monitoring around the interventions that may be put in place for those students that are struggling? I, I think she's asking for those specifics.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, you're not going to just sit around and talk.
Right.
But they need help. People need support.
Okay, so specifically what we did to support them, okay.
I mean, and teachers need to know that you're there to support them.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Get the data.
Shifting gears away from discipline data. Do we have data? Because I hear you say that this first quarter data is still being worked out.
Ds and Fs, yeah.
Do we have data that supports virtual learning during COVID for the majority of the students in our district, to your knowledge?
I mean, we, we have data, but?
Does the data say our students had gains during virtual learning?
So one of the things that, because we need, we need common data across the board, right? So some of that's going to be like state assessment data. And we didn't take the state assessment, nobody in the state took it, right?
In 2020.
In 2020. But we could have some data from 2021.
Okay, so that would be what I would be interested in. Because if I heard you earlier, short term is our issue. So data from '21 would inform our decision-making processes from 2020 during virtual learning. My next question, do we have data specifically around students using Edgenuity, proximity learning, or any other virtual platform that our district is currently learn, utilizing to connect with students? Is there a way to pull that data?
Yeah, we can pull proximity learning. We can pull some Edgenuity as well. We, we can pull some of that data.
And then, do, I don't see it in this report. We also renewed our agreement with TPT. Do we have data on tutoring services? The impact of those who are taking those tutoring services? And if it's actually having any difference?
So we will bring that next time, because it was still getting off the ground midway through first quarter.
Okay.
But we had the evaluation that we did last year, and we know that we need to collect more data on that. And so it was still getting off the ground mid-first quarter.
Okay.
So second quarter, we should have, end of first semester, better data around tutoring.
And my fourth question, and I will send all of these questions to you.
Oh, fantastic.
Do we have data that supports online coaching has been successful? So I'm talking about when staff or instructional coaches are listening into sessions or helping. What, how are we quantifying? Because the question today was around data. How are we going to quantify that someone having access to watch something is actually impacting student achievement?
I don't know that we have coaches, online coaching. We don't have online coaching.
So we don't have online coaching, but part of the educational pro to this request is that online coaching can happen, or?
Well, I, I don't know that we currently do it, but?
Figure out the outcomes.
I, I suppose if we looked at other fields, such as psychology, right? When a therapist is going in for the first time for sessions, they have something in their ear and somebody is watching, and that's how they do it. If you look at any professional athlete who always goes back and watches game film, I, I mean, tho, those are some of the other fields that we can look to that have a practice there. But I don't know that there's data that we can specifically pull at this time that we're doing. But there's other fields and industries that, that absolutely have data around video coaching, live coaching, things like that, you know?
But there's none in education currently.
I, I think that Jim Knight has quite a bit. I think that Jim Knight has done, out of KU, has done quite a bit with the video coaching. I think he has a, I don't know if he has in a whole book on it, but at least a few chapters on it. But no, nothing that we're currently doing. But I know that he, he does do that. But he's based it off of that psychology model, the therapy model of doing that coaching, so it's there.
I actually have two comments. One of them is, thank you for the slide that did the comparison of the schools that when, that you were able to see like how they, how they landed. I'd be curious to see what that would look like in comparison to like stay interviews. I don't know what questions will be there, I'm not asking for anything, but just comparison to like our staff, like where they are in comparison, those schools in comparison to how our students are doing. So this may be something to think about as you're trying to back into the success rate of those schools. That's the first thing. And then the second thing is, and I, I know very little, but we're talking about summer school, we're talking about attendance, maybe just a different tactic of how are we handling all students for the summer? So I know summer school is offered to all, but I don't know that all schools provide assignments. And I don't know what that looks like. I do know of one school that provides a summer assignment that you know, first week, you're going to have some type of test or some type of expectations. But that might be another way of making sure that we're keeping our learning with our students. So those are all comments for you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Dr. Conrad?
Oh, thank you for your presentation.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Dr. Conrad, thank you for the information, board. We have the information. We will continue to gather information at the end of second quarter. If there are questions that do pop up while you're thinking about it, you can send those over to Dr. Stubblefield. We'll make sure to get those to staff and get responses to the full board. Thank you for the information. I think it's important that we continue getting these, this information and these reports so that we can monitor how our students are doing and where we can shift strategies or continue implementing strategies when they're working. So thank you again for the information. Next agenda item is Agenda Item 10. Board, this is the new item that was added tonight, to tonight's agenda. It is regarding the Facilities Committee. If you recall, at our previous board meeting, there was a motion and a second to combine the Facilities and the Finance Committee. And we tabled that motion to have that conversation today when all seven of us could be present. I know there was conversation around potentially having the Facilities be combined with the Boundary Committee. I, I know there are board members who have some opinions one way or the other, and some board members who want to participate in, in the committees. So just wanted to bring that back forward. Again, there is a motion on the table, so I'll open up the conversation. The, the motion, as a reminder, was that the Facilities and the Finance Committee be combined. So I'll open up for questions, comment. Dr. Nguyen, you weren't here at the last meeting, so I don't know if you want to, if you have any questions or thoughts, I'll defer to you first.
Thank you. And so I think I communicated to everyone that I would not support the combination. One reason, just what you said, that by having separate committees, you get more board members involved in, in different, different aspects of, of our, our development. Another reason I would have the Facility Committee stand separately, I would, I would imagine we would have community members. And so I would see the board members choosing the committee, the community members as opposed to combining it with the, I think, the Boundary Committee. We didn't, we did not choose the, the members. Not that that makes a, a big difference, but I do believe that moving forward, we need to have more impact on, on what, what the board is responsible for doing. So I would, I think that's clear.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions around the Facilities Committee? And just for clarification, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You would like to see the Facilities Committee be a standalone committee on its own without being combined?
Correct.
Any committee, okay, thank you.
And that the members, the community members of the, the Facilities Committee, the board chooses.
Right, thank you.
I would echo all of Dr. Nguyen's thoughts.
I, I just want to, for clarification, I can't remember who, but there were board members involved in selecting the Boundary Committee? It may have been those on the committee, or it might be?
I don't know. I did not know that.
But I do think it will be helpful for one another. And then if you all have just clear protocols around how you're selecting it, I think, and I could be confused in school districts, so I apologize. I thought it was the chairs who were a part of that conversation, but I could be not. No.
I wasn't chair last year, I was just part of the committee.
Okay, so I, I could be mistaken. But I just recall some board members looking at the applications of the committee members, yeah.
So then I do think, to your point, I do think it would be important for us to establish clear priorities or protocols for all committees to follow. And if we want to have community members on committees, what does that process look like? I know the Boundary Committee had a, an application process that, that community members could fill out. But I think it is important for us to have clear processes and protocols for all of those. We do have a couple more special development sessions for the board, November 3rd and November 16th, where I believe one of our priorities is to establish those processes and protocols to make sure that we're all operating on the same page as committees in how we're developing, getting community, community members as a part of that, those committees, if they are a part of the committees.
So I don't, because we don't have that process or policy, I don't see why we can't go with what was suggested for the creation of this committee with the intent of ensuring from the point that we do create that policy, that is the action. I was not a part of, I saw the application for the Boundary Committee. I was not a part of picking those folks. I don't know that anyone that I represent in my numerous capacities serves on that committee. And I think that was speaking, correct me if I'm wrong, is this, that board members are able to take in who they know and ask those individuals, would you be willing to serve on this board committee for this reason? I think the committee that was created before was under the direction of Ms. Lenora Miller. And I, I don't recall there being any discussion of board members reviewing the applications. But I could also be wrong. But I don't remember that being a part of the process. So I'm, again, saying I'm supporting us picking who is on the Facilities Committee, and I don't think that that is a horrible path forward either.
And I just remembered, everybody who applied was actually on the committee. We just shared out the names. So I was like, I know we shared them, so anybody who applied, because it was representation from across the district. And I don't have an issue with board members. My experience has been whomever the chairs are, along with administration, just would go through it. But ultimately, it was the board's decision because it was the board committee. But last year with Boundary, everybody who applied from the community actually was invited to be a part of the committee.
And I think it would be necessary that when we have our development meeting, to be able to look at the protocol that's necessary in order for us to be able to operate in the right way and making sure that open communication is given out to everybody. So I would suggest that we not vote right now, but wait until we come into our board development meeting and then make the final decisions then.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? So there is a motion on the table, so we, we do have to either vote on that unless, and I, I believe Ms. Drew and Ms. Clark were the persons that made the motion and seconded. So I don't, I don't, Ms. Drew, were you suggesting that you wanted to?
Table it.
Withdraw your motion?
Yes.
You want to withdraw your motion? Okay, and Ms. Clark, you're, okay.
She can make a substitute motion.
There certainly can be a substitute motion if somebody would like to make one.
I mean, what?
Or?
Drew, she can, she can make the substitute motion that then?
I make a motion that we withdraw the original that was presented and, and to redirect it when we, after we have our developmental meeting to look at the guidelines that we're going to follow.
So there, so your motion would be to withdraw your motion and to have a conversation, for the, for the board to have a conversation about how we want to move forward with the Facilities Committee? My question to Dr. Stubblefield would be, and only because I know facilities as an important topic, and if we, how would this hold up any conversations or processes around facilities? Facilities if we take this up at our next special board meeting next week or the following week?
I'm looking at Mr. Lilly. I do not think it will hold up anything because right now either the RFQ or the Facilities Masters Plan just went out or a B going out, so it won't hold up anything.
RFQ went out on Friday, and it will be open for three weeks, so I think there is some time to still develop that committee.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Nguyen, I see...
That's a problem, because if we haven't established a Facility Committee, we didn't authorize an RFP to go out, did we? I may have missed that meeting.
The board authorized it at the last meeting.
Oh, the last meeting.
For the RFQ to go out. Yeah.
Yeah. It had been on as new business, it had come up as new business and then came up at a second meeting, if I remember correctly. So we had seen it twice, and it was voted on at the last meeting.
It came up under Capital Improvement Plan, and then it came up as an individual item at the last meeting.
So we have that RFQ in the agenda last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, copy of it?
No, it's, I, it was, the permission was given to put out bids for an RFQ.
Right. So we have a copy of that RFQ or RFP or whatever, RF whatever.
The last...
That you just sent out, we have a copy of that.
No.
I guess my question is, why not?
Steve, you can...
I don't want to turn around and ask him whether I want the microphone.
No, no, you're fine. I think the practice, and Wayne can correct me, typically the board has approved for the RFQs to go out, and they're typically, and if the board wants to change that, it's not an issue with me. They typically, you have typically approved for it to go out, and then they went out, and but they have not...
And we never see it until it comes back as a bid.
Yes.
Okay?
I can provide you with a copy.
Well, not me, I mean, provide the board. Just put it in our library or something.
Yeah.
We'll get that to, if Ms. Smith, if you can get that from Wayne and then provide that in the board library and let the board know where it's at, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. So we will take that conversation up at the November 3rd meeting, if I'm hearing correctly, to make sure that we are moving forward and have the conversation about how we want to set those protocols and processes for those committees. Any other questions or comments regarding the Facilities Committee? I did have one clarification, I did ask Ms., I did say I would clarify on this. Mr. Goheen, just a question for you around clarification, when the board clerk cannot be present at a committee meeting, just regarding the minutes or the notes, there were back and forth questions about who actually can take the notes or the minutes of a committee meeting if the clerk or the deputy clerk cannot be present.
Well, I mean, ultimately, that would be up to the board to decide that as part of your protocols as to what you wanted the case to be or not. The committee chair could take the notes or could delegate somebody at the committee meeting to take notes if you didn't have the clerk present at the meeting.
Okay.
But again, for uniformity's sake, I really do think for all of these committees, the board needs to develop some protocols so that they are uniformly managed.
Thank you. Thank you. I think there was just some questions, I received a few questions about whether the clerk had to be present or did not have to be present, so that's helpful. Thank you.
They have to be noticed as a public meeting, which clerk would send out, but...
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, Ms. Smith.
I want to make sure I understand this, and from what Mr. Goheen said, so you don't have to have the clerk or the deputy clerk there?
Well, your only issue is that, no, you don't have to. If the board were to decide you don't need the clerk to be present, there's no statutory requirement that a board clerk be present at the committee meeting. It is governed by the Open Meetings Act, so you do have to have a notice that goes out of the public meeting from the clerk. The records, once they're created, the clerk is still a custodian of the records of that meeting. So if you have somebody else, the clerk can't be present, and you decide that's what your protocol is going to be for what those notes are, ultimately, once the committee's done with that, the clerk would be the responsible party to hold that.
But we need to make sure she gets a copy.
Yes.
For the record.
Yeah.
There was a discrepancy of whether that was in the handbook or not, but you're saying it's up to us to set the protocol.
Yeah, I don't think the handbook specifies, so the board, that is, an area that I believe the board needs to set a specific protocol so that you guys handle it. You guys haven't used active committees in quite a while, so I think it's important to have clarity as exactly how you guys want that run.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we will continue on with our agenda.
We have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, thank you, Dr. Nguyen. There is a motion on the floor. Ms. Smith, would you please do it? And the motion is to withdraw the current motion that was tabled at the last board meeting and to take up the Facilities Committee and committee protocols at the development session on November 3rd.
Yes.
And there was a second for that. Ms. Clark, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is our policy review. We have first up for third read, changes to the employee handbook. Would open up for any questions or comments on the employee handbook.
I would just point out that the changes that were requested last time appear in the document that's on the agenda in blue, that is to include the complaint process specifically in the handbook.
Ms. Clark.
Well, I apologize, I don't think I sent my email the right way. I have some questions, and we talked about this a little bit last time, around social media. And if I'm reading this incorrectly, just let me know, or if this is not the right place, then I'm okay with that as well. When I, when I went back and read, it seemed like the social media process really protected, like what would be added to the district website versus talking about like what an employee can actually post, I'm going to say on behalf of the district, and/or how our employees interact maybe with our students. So I guess it's a question of, is that something that we should be considering in our employee handbook before we move forward?
Yeah, a couple, a couple things on that. You've got a couple different places where you approach the solicitation of goods, which would include social media, and also interactions with students at fundraising, things of that nature, which is what I think you're talking about. Is that right?
What was the last thing you said, students at fundraising?
Fundraisers.
That's what I was wondering. No, I'm talking about inappropriate maybe conversations with students through, or, and this probably is a broader conversation of...
I think we'd had some discussions, there are policies that deal with some of those things, but you've talked a couple different times about wanting a specific social media policy, other than our, I'm forgetting what it's called, use policy dealing with technology, which is sort of a separate guideline. You don't have one formally in place right now dealing with social media, so if that's something the board wants to take on as a potential policy, then that's something we would need to either develop or get input from the board to make sure we're covering what you want to cover.
So, Mr. Goheen, would that be a discussion for the handbook, or would that be a discussion for policy, or both?
Well, what I think you would do is, I think the handbook you ought to adopt so that you have a handbook in place that's up to date and current with your current policies. Remember, we made a provision in the handbook that if you update or adopt a new policy at a later point, that would be automatically considered part of the handbook. And then at that point, if you wanted to amend the handbook to include that specific social media policy, and that's, you could do that at that time.
Okay.
You know, I think it's a perfectly fine idea to have a social media policy. I think that makes sense. It is not currently part of the handbook because you currently don't have one.
Okay. Thank you for those answers, and so, okay.
My question around this topic is, can we legally police other people's social media in that way?
Yeah, if they're, if they're posting stuff in connection with their employment by the district or things of that nature, then yeah. So if somebody's posting on social media, just to use an example, and is trying to solicit goods or items for the benefit of the school district, that is something that we could police if they're an employee of the school district. If somebody's using social media who's an employee of the school district to interact inappropriately with a student of the school district, yes, that is something you could police. If they're using it for a purely private purpose that doesn't have any connection with the school district, then no.
And I don't know if this helps, I did go back and look at some other schools and their policies for those things, and yes, and a lot of, a lot of, because what we've also found is we've had postings out there asking for things, and we've gone back and asked staff, why are we looking for these, or why are we putting our district out there like that, and the right protocol maybe was not followed, or the person didn't know that those things were there. So it's just bad representation of the district, in my opinion.
So I asked for the grant information. I saw a lot of red tape in there. So then, from our perspective, what do we need to do to reduce some of that red tape? Like, because I feel like that is the barrier to why people, because if we, if it's taking 30 days, or if I want something for my class next week and I have to submit it, and it has to come, like, that process seems long and...
And so maybe it's clarification of the process as well, so, I'm sorry. Ms. Walker?
Yeah, I can add a little information to that. We work really hard to expedite requests. We just ask that teachers or staff members at the district use the approved platforms. Those are platforms that our finance department have ensured they comply with all of our auditing guidelines, so we can track what is received and how it is used, and we're required to do that. So the application process is pretty quick. It's a matter of making sure that your request is aligned with the school improvement plan, goals of the district, getting your supervisor's approval, and then sending it to our department, our grant writer, and we turn those around really pretty quickly, as long as all the information is there.
So when you say quick process, how long are you saying?
I mean, it can be two or three days if they have everything. Now, sometimes, you know, we'll get something and it will not be complete, and we'll send it back, and it could be two weeks then before the staff member ends up getting it back to us. But we turn those around on a regular basis, pretty much every day we're reviewing and sending it on.
And then the instance that my supervisor says no, what is my outlet?
Well, I guess you could seek other funding through other sources, but we would charge the supervisor with knowing what the goals of the program are, and if there are other funds available, we do ask for staff members to check first to make sure that there are not funds in another budget. That could be covered before we seek outside resources for something that we have funding for. So sometimes they'll be redirected to another department, but that would be something to work through with their supervisor or with their supervisor's supervisor, I guess, if it needed to go that far. There's a difference of opinion.
Because I think in some cases, in just perception, someone asks, their supervisor says no, probably because there's a difference of opinion of whether something is valuable to a teaching experience or not, just amongst people, that's just what happens, and then those people, so I want to make sure that our processes in all of this, I wouldn't say I'm for or against it, but that we're making it accessible for our staff to have access to what they also think would improve the...
Sure. I think we're always looking for anything that's utilized in our classrooms, that it aligns with our curriculum resources, our curriculum guides, and that it's, you know, supports evidence-based practices, and that it brings value then to the instructional programming, and that there is an outcome that we can measure. So some of the things that would be requested, gift cards, things of that nature, or things off of Teachers Pay Teachers sites that are not in alignment with what we're wanting teachers to use would be denied if they're seen as being in conflict. But those are things that we just work by or work through on an individual, case-by-case basis.
Is culture and classroom aesthetics part of that process? Okay.
Sure. Yeah. Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Mr. Goheen, tell me one more time, what is blue, yellow, and green?
So blue is the most recent additions that were made after the last board meeting, where there was a request to include the language for the complaint process, and I think, I think there was a help line and some other stuff that was added that are in blue from the last meeting. And then the other colors, and I forget which order they came in, were also ads at the prior readings at the request of the board to modify what was contained in the handbook. I can't remember what those specific ones, I think one was related to some of the policy references, and I can't remember what the other one was.
Look on page 11, and I know what it's, what I think it's supposed to say, the last sentence under complaints.
Yep.
Whenever possible, complaints shall, should be resolved at the lowers, possible?
Should be lowest.
Okay.
Possible level.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but it didn't say that. Thank you.
Yep, we'll correct that.
Thank you.
If anybody sees any other typographical errors, please let us know before we get it out.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to accept, I don't want to, unless there are some additional thoughts or comments, to accept for third read the employee handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further questions or discussion?
My discussion would just be, I just don't want to forget the points that were made tonight. I would like for us to circle back as a board and talk about those things.
Yeah, I would agree, and I would have one additional to add on to that, so maybe we can add that for our next regular agenda under policy discussion so that we don't lose sight of this conversation tonight. I would have an interest, and I may be the only one, but in discussing our policy around leave for bereavement, to increase that from three to five days for all employees, or up to five days, but that's, I don't know if the will of the board would be to have that conversation, but that would be one that I would want to look at in the future.
I support that. I would also like this board to look at our paternity, parental, maternity policy that is currently non-existent. I think that's important as we move this district forward in ensuring that those individuals have that opportunity.
Thank you.
One policy that has been lost, and I think Dr. Nguyen and others have brought it up, and we actually need it for an audit that we're going through, is an equity policy. And it, I know it's been brought up and discussed, but we do need some sort of equity policy on equity.
Yep. Thank you.
So I guess my question is, why would we accept this if those things are lacking?
We currently don't have a handbook in any policy, because you, I don't, the last time it was adopted, I think it was 2019 somewhere.
I think it's older than that.
Okay. So we need like a handbook.
That's enough. I get it. Okay.
To be continued.
Yes.
Yeah. And certainly, this should be a living document. As you update your other policies, you certainly should be amending your handbook to include those additional changes.
Thank you. Great question. Other questions? If not, would, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next policy is to accept for third read the NARCAN policy.
And it's, I don't think there have been any changes to it, so I haven't had any comments on it, so it's up for third read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one statement that I hope that this implementation could be, I heard some chatter, if we can just make sure during that enough is enough when we're talking about those things, that this information can be provided to parents as this is one productive step, measure we're trying to ensure we have available in all of our buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
I would, I would add on to that, that maybe for enough is enough, we also, or maybe this goes somewhere else, teach our parents, our guardians, how to navigate through. So if we're having to adopt a policy like that, how do you navigate your student through those things? those things? We talked a lot about absences today, what are those absences being caused by? A lot of our students are suffering, and families are suffering, and so, we're trying to figure out how to handle those types of situations. And I just don't know how educated, how we're educating our families on when those things are happening to their students, and what that looks like, and what they can report, and what they can't report, without feeling like there's a fear of being in trouble. If there's questions on that, I'm happy to answer, clarify what that means.
I, I think that's, in the MOU agreement with the UG, I think that was an item, and I emailed that, I think that is, it shouldn't be like, let's think about it, but I think it truly should be something that we're doing, so.
Thank you. I lost track, there was a motion and a second, correct? Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne.
Dr. Wayne, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item are our executive sessions, we can, Ms. Smith, staff.
Um, staff, your business, I don't think anyone is a part of any of them, so thank you.
Thank you, staff, for joining us tonight, for all your continued work. Our first executive session, would recess, would take a motion to recess to executive session, to discuss superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel, exception to coma, going in at 8:15 for 25 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne.
Dr. Wayne, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.[735.57]
All right, motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Thank you.
All right, back in open session. Entertainer motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma, going in at eight forty-three for fifteen minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Thank you.
All right, back in open session. Entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma, going in at 8:43 for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Yolanda Brownlee Page.
Yolanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for tonight, board and everybody. Again, don't forget committee meetings next week and special board meeting next week as well. So have a great rest of your week. This meeting is adjourned.